Yes. All right, seven o'clock, April 29th, Monday. Call the select board meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight to start the meeting off for a food truck application. Looks like Coast to Coast Catering.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, this is a food truck that will be going in to the property that we've already have three food trucks approved for at the Vannet property on Route One. This will take the place of one of the ones that did not return. You still have Herb Meyer doing businesses, something's fishy, and then you have Cheryl Spofford with Sprinkles, and then this will be Mr. Crook with Coast to Coast Catering.
It's like everything's in order, insurance, fees. And he's a local, lives right here in town. All right, anything from the public, anything from the board on this? Well, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and get an approval of the agenda.
I have one addition, we do have a payroll warrant tonight, so we'd like to add that to the, to the agenda.
Yeah, last school board meeting, we adjourned our, our meeting, so I know, I have everything. I did watch the video, but not enough to write down. So I make a motion we approve as amended.
Motion by Dan, second by Velma, all those in favor? Public forum, this would be the opportunity to discuss any non-agenda items. Please come to the table, make sure the microphone is on, please, it should be a green light to indicate that it's on.
I mean, moving closer to my mouth, I was getting it fine from you.
Yeah, and you can pull it right towards you if you'd like.
Perfect, there you go.
Gail Asmussen Spofford, I'm here this evening primarily as the Chair of the Finance Committee for RSU 21, but also I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of School Directors for RSU 21. I just wanted to remind the board and any members of the community present and all those that might watch this meeting afterwards about the two opportunities that the voters have to interact on the budget. This coming Monday, a week from today, on May 6th, we'll have the first part of the budget voting process, that's a budget validation process, where, which will be held at the Kennebunk Elementary School in the gymnasium at 7:00 PM. It's the vote where you go in, register with your town clerk, pick up a card for voting, and then vote on the warrant items required by the State of Maine. There are still opportunities, if you have questions about the budget or concerns about the budget, to send, to ask for information by emailing theschoolboard@rsu21.net. Or you can go on the school board website, rsu21.net. And there's a pop-up now of the entire budget process that we'll be going through on Monday. You can go from there to the menu, which is those three little bars in the upper right-hand corner on the main page, and go to school board, and under that go to the Finance Committee, and there are also the same documents there in addition to some frequently asked questions. We've been posting the questions that have been coming in to the school board because those questions for one person might be important to others, so we've been putting them on the website so that anybody can look at it, so perhaps their questions can be answered in advance. Otherwise, like today, I got another email today. So that is basically all I wanted to let you know, except that as you have on your, under number seven business, there will be voting on June 11th at your local voting place for all registered voters in Kennebunk, Kennebunkport, and Rundle. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Anything else from the public? Anybody but Diane, anybody else?
All right, Diane Robbins, Rundle, Diane Robbins, Mokus, Rundle, Maine. So I have been before you in regards to some issues that I've had, and it appears that it just falls on deaf ears, you listen to me, but you don't do anything about it. On February 20th, the planning board had a meeting on the land use regulations in which I would not allow any public input or questions. Look at the video, starting at about minute 19. Then I went to the public hearing on the land use regulations. Starting at 46.59, they started getting a little upset because I found so many mistakes in what had been given to us to review. This is the document that I was discussing with them. It goes from H to A. Thank you. Then it goes one and two when it should have been B. Between is misspelled. Then there's something in here, it says lots located more than a... This whole thing, and I'm going to give you a copy of this. This is not in what you are taking to the town. Because once I brought this to the planning board, they decided not to move it forward because it had too many mistakes in it. This could have been avoided if they would follow the rules. But apparently, they don't allow public comment. They don't even know what Robert's rules are. Because I asked the chairman, do you even know what Robert's rules, because what's that? How do we end up with committees and boards that don't know what Robert's rules are? And I still haven't gotten an answer as to under what rule we're not allowed to go to a planning board meeting where they're discussing land use regulations changes, and we're not allowed to ask any questions. Once again, I was told, we make our own rules. We are going to find ourselves in big time legal problems. I have lived in this town for a long time. I have the greatest respect for people that sit on boards and committees because this is a lot of time out of their day. I know I've done it. But we can't continue down this path. The reason we have these meetings is so that we can discuss these things. And then I go to the meeting, and yes, he's leaving. But he says, this is after he wouldn't let me speak at the first meeting. And he goes, well, I know what you're doing here. He says, I really wish you were to come to my office and had a discussion with me about this. Why in the world would I go have a discussion with a planner after he told me that I shouldn't be allowed to ask any questions till we have the public hearing? I asked the Chair of the Planning Board. I said, when you had this meeting, did you guys go through these, or did you just approve them? Apparently, they just approved them. They didn't even know they were full of mistakes. This all went out to the public. I got gavelled. Now, I may be a loudmouth, but usually when I say something, I'm looking out for the best interest of the town. This is ridiculous. Back to Robert's rules. I want the money for my dump ticket. I shouldn't have to hassle with it. I bought that ticket in good faith. I shouldn't be out, I don't know how many, $52 or whatever it was, because I haven't been able to use it. And I saw the posting of make sure you use it before June 30th. According to Robert's rules, if the issue was not on the agenda and you voted on it, that vote don't count. It doesn't count. It wasn't on the agenda, you didn't give anybody advance notice you were going to have that discussion. I understand how it happened, I'm not mad about how it happened. I'm mad about the fact that you're going to make our tickets null and void before we could possibly use them, or some of us may not even use them at all. That's money out of my pocket that I shouldn't be out. You wanted the tickets back, buy them back. Mine's brand new, I've never used it. I bought it a couple of weeks before town meeting without realizing that you were going to change the rules. And there was no discussion at town meeting, because I asked several people that were there. I said, did I miss something? Did they say that we weren't gonna, you know, the tickets are gonna be no good, or we're not gonna have to use them anymore? You know, there was no discussion about tickets. So I want my money back. I think we need to ensure that not just the planning board, but all of the boards that meet understand what Robert rules are, so we don't end up getting ourselves into trouble. Now, I've had some time to think about this Clearview after we had that lengthy meeting, and I'm sorry it took me a couple of weeks, but without any power forever and going to work when it was 47 degrees in my house. And I did get my internet back for a week and a half. But that's only because my telephone pole, my power, my underground power, got shifted 12 to 14 inches towards the road. So two of my lines were disconnected from the pole. It's not been fun. I understand what you're doing with Clearview, and I'm not arguing with you. But Tom said something during that meeting, and it just stuck with me. The current deed for Michael Thomas and the other lots that are affected have not been corrected. Before the town entertains doing a land swap with this particular individual, which I've never seen done, we'll see how that goes. His current deed should be correct before we entertain looking at doing anything else with his deed or doing any type of land swap. I say this because if something should happen and enough people show up, or if people say, no, we don't want to do any land swaps, it's not what we do, we should have a deed that's correct because we know that his deed is wrong. I looked at the original deed from DuBois to the person who owned it before Mr. Thomas. It had something in it about it had to follow the consent decree from 1995. But it didn't have the specifics. I did find the specific documents in the file, and I have them all printed, I can bring them for you if you want, that show each lot done by, I believe it was Cologne. It was by the land surveyor, and some of them signed the stamped State of Maine on them. So they have all the specific idiosyncrasies about the pieces and the latitude and latitudes, all the different things from the, those of you that have been on the planning board, you know what I'm talking about. There are like five of them, and I copied them all, that give you all of the this, 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 and this that had to be on their deeds. That's the part that didn't get done. That really should get corrected before we end up with another issue. Then I questioned the lot size. And he said, well, the minimum lot size is blah, blah, blah. I don't believe that that counts if you're in a development. If you're in a development and the development was approved with lots of a certain size, and it's a development, I don't believe that they are allowed to change the lot sizes. And the reason I say this is because in that very thing, two folder documents that I went through for three hours, there was something in there that said that they were going to do easements on a couple of them because they didn't want to put them below the required lot acreage. So when you start talking about restructuring a road and then taking out a 60-foot section on the end of the property, is he going to meet the requirements that were required when that lot was designed? Even though things have changed, this is a subdivision. The subdivision lots don't change when we change our lots. I also question, and I'm taking this to you because I really don't feel comfortable taking it to the planning board. When you're going to the planning board to have a subdivision reviewed, approved, whatever, I don't understand how the application can be considered complete when there's no stinking road to the development. There's no road. It's all hypothetical, I could build it here, I have an easement, change the road. It's not complete. They shouldn't, my concern is, is if they, everybody said, okay, they can look at the development, they can approve it. But he's not going to get a permit because he doesn't have the road. Is that going to become a liability for us? I've lived in this town a long time. I won't move from this town, I love this town, and to be quite honest, the vast majority of the people that live in this town are the most wonderful people I've ever met. I have one helping me at one property, helping me cut my trees. I have another one that came over during the storm, and we got my whole road cleared out. You don't get people like that in every town. I consider this a very unique town where we can agree to disagree, have an argument, and then go to lunch. Because we can. But to consider an application for a subdivision to be complete with no road is a problem. I wonder if during this whole process, if we don't trade land, then he can't get his road, but he's invested all this money, is he going to come back and sue us? Is he going to want some legal ramifications? Is he going to want to try to legally try to fix this? That scares me because that's our tax dollars. I see enough of that getting wasted by the RSU, fighting Thornton Academy, a bunch of money here, a bunch of money there. We're small. We watch what we do, we watch our finances, we try to keep ourselves out of trouble, it's been a long time since I've seen trouble. I don't want us to go back down that road. And I wrote this up because I wanted it to be taken seriously, not because I have anything, I don't have any issue with what you've done. I don't. I have an issue with ensuring that no matter which way this goes, we still have a deed for him that started off with the right information. Then if we change it, okay, now we have a new deed that shows where we went from, this is what we were supposed to have, to this is what we agreed on at town meeting if that happens. Then we have a process to ensure that his lot doesn't get so small that it no longer fits the minimum requirement that the rest of the people within that development have to meet. And it was a concern because there's notes in that file that says, and on a couple of the lots, if we would have taken the property versus doing an easement, it would have made their lots too small, and we were concerned about doing that. So I don't know exactly what the lot requirement was because at the time I wasn't looking for that. But I'm asking you to please, I'm not saying this to be mean, I'm not saying this to be critical. I'm saying this as somebody who's lived in this town for 43 years. When I see these things happen, I get concerned. And then they left it telling them they had to get an attorney and get the attorney to straighten out the road. It's a town road. No. And the town attorney told DuBois, you're not touching the road. It's in her note, you are not touching the road, you're not going to change the road, you're going to hand the land back, you're going to hand those land pieces over to the town because cutting into the road, changing the road, doing things to the road will only damage and make the road break down. And it's all documented. So thank you for listening to me, and I'm really not trying to be critical, and I'm sorry that I felt that I had to write this up. But I don't want to see us getting into any more hot water, and I, with this guy, I'm not very trusting. Thank you.
You have copies for us, Diane, you said you have.
I have one call. You can have all my originals.
Can I, can I make a comment to Diane? The tickets part for Casella, the reason we brought that up is because Casella stopped it. It was discussed at town meeting, at town meeting, we did state that tickets were no longer going to be used, and X amount of time went by, Casella stopped it. Somebody, a couple of folks called me, I got ahold of Keith, I got ahold of Casella, said, you guys, you can't do this, you can't stop it. And that's when we decided to continue it on, because Casella's the one that said, no more tickets. We were trying to save the residents money by allowing it to happen, so that's why we did that. Casella's the one that stopped it, and we did talk, we did say it at town meeting. It was brought up, and Keith can...
Right, you, you said that we weren't going to need them, but you didn't tell us that they were going to be worthless.
Well, not needing them, if you don't need your tickets.
Right, but you have to understand, we paid money for those.
And that's, and that's why we went back and said, you, Casella, you can't do this, and you know, we've already paid you folks for these tickets, so you have to honor it. So that's why we went back to them, that's because they had stopped it, they had stopped it for a weekend.
But this is months and months ago that I came in front of you.
Right, yeah.
And then afterward, there's a posting, make sure that you use your tickets, because they're going to end on June whatever.
That's, that's the agreement that we made with Casella.
Well, the problem is, you didn't involve us in that agreement. And we're the ones that paid for the tickets. You can't speak for us.
But some of that is...
To go away, then you need to pay me for it.
Some of that is based, and Keith can, can step in, but that's Casella that made that determination. Casella does not want to do the tickets.
Then tell him to pay us for our tickets.
It's, it's a fair comment.
I should be out 50 some odd, I should be out 50 some odd dollars because we changed the rules after I bought a ticket. No one said anything to me when I bought it that we weren't going to be using them anymore, or that this was on the, the thing. There was nothing. It wasn't until the vote got taken and I saw it by accident, I'm like, wait a minute, I've got a brand new card. I shouldn't be out that money, I don't care, this is, this is between you and Casella as far as what arrangement you have. But I was required to get one of those to dispose of my dump. I did what I was supposed to do, and then before I could use it, the rules got changed. I should not be out that money because the rules got changed. No one should be.
Right, and that's why we put the post out that said, use them, use them if you can, and if we can't, then we'll have to figure something else out, that's just bored to the side, but...
Because I don't like being out that money, I work hard enough for my money. I'm retired and I'm still working, although I do love my job. I do love my job. But I don't want to be out that money. And I especially don't want him to keep my money.
Fair. You have two months, you wouldn't use that in two months?
No, because I am not ready to finish the house, I don't, I don't have much demo debris. You know, when the house comes down, well, that's a whole different story, but I'm not even sure Ethan's coming home this summer, so I'm going to have to wait till my brothers can help me do it because he's not, I may even have to pay somebody to do it. So I may not, I may have a much bigger expense than my $50 ticket can cover. I mean, I would love to be able to say, yeah, I could use it all up, then I wouldn't have to come here and complain to you. But I don't see myself using that whole thing, that's my problem. And I'm concerned that I'm not the only person. So if he doesn't want to honor them, he doesn't want to accept them, then there should be a period of time for us to be able to bring our tickets in and get our money reimbursed for what's left on our tickets. That's fair, because he's been paid. He shouldn't be paid twice, and that's essentially what you're allowing. You're allowing him to be paid twice. So I know it's not all your fault, I know that there are a lot of things going on, and I don't fault you for what you did. But I do fault you for the way it happened and for the fact that most of us didn't realize this was going to happen and that we, if we didn't use it, we would lose it, and that's just not right. No one should ever be paid twice for the same service. So I already paid him for dump that I'm not going to dump because you're paying for it. So I paid for it out of my own money, and then you're taxing me to pay him again. Nobody should be allowed to double dip with taxpayer money.
It's a fair statement. And the other thing, lot size, I asked, when they came over here to do the, to the street, I asked if what they're doing would go, would bring that lot under the, and, and old lawyer, whoever was representing said...
He said, oh, the current lot size is what he said, go back and read it, the current lot size. The problem is, he doesn't go by the current lot size. He has to go by the lot size that was approved within that development.
Agreed.
Now, if he had a single lot out somewhere else and he decided to split it because we changed it, he can.
Yeah.
But he's in a subdivision that went by certain rules.
And it was, it was what was required on that, I, I think there were one acre lots, if I remember right, and that was a little over an acre, what was the... Yeah, well, it was a, I don't know if the rules were back then, plus the subdivision today, you can, I, I don't know what they were back then, but we... Yeah.
So I guess my, my whole thing here is that it wasn't designed to have a 60-foot swath taken out of it and impact the road, that's not how the development was designed. So I'm going to leave that to you, but you have my writing.
Diane, just before you leave, I want to inform you that we don't operate under Robert's Rules of Order. We have our own procedures here, we have never adopted Robert's rules.
Well, when we were the Cott Plan Committee, we used Robert's.
We did not, we never have.
Okay, so let me ask you, does the planning board have written rules?
They have their rules, their regulations, look at them.
I did, I couldn't find anything about what they told me I couldn't do.
No.
I didn't see...
They established their rules, we have established ours, and they're not Robert's rules, they are the most arcane piece of garbage that there is.
Okay, so you're telling me that it's okay for them to tell me that I can never ask a question...
If they adopt a procedure whereby they want to have a discussion among themselves before they take public input, that's perfectly appropriate. And then they have a public hearing and take public input. They want to be able to move the process along, and getting interrupted constantly while they deliberate slows the process down.
Yeah, and then you have a public...
For a lot of boards, that's the way most of them proceed.
Yep, but we're not Portland.
I didn't say I was Portland, but many of the, in this county, our neighbors.
But you can't tell me I can't speak, then I have to go to the public hearing.
Speak when you're, when it's time for you to speak, when the public is allowed to invest, that's when it happens.
No, they only allow you to talk on non-agenda items.
On, on public hearing, when they have a public hearing, you're allowed to address the board.
Tom, that's what I am trying to tell you, when I went to that public hearing, and Sharon can attest to it, I came up with all, I went through every single land use regulation, and you'll tell by looking at those pages, when I brought them up, and I said, did you not even read these before you sent them out to the public? Because they're riddled with misspellings.
Different issue, I mean, this sounds like, I haven't looked at the documents myself yet, this is the first time I've seen them, I don't know what they say.
He said, well, you know, I underst, he says, I know what you're doing. And he said, you should have come to my office and talked to me.
I mean...
Why would I go talk to him after he said, I can't talk, and then you had a public hearing? The public, they talked, that was where I was supposed to talk.
They didn't tell you you couldn't talk, you talked. They didn't tell you you couldn't talk. You talked. You told them, didn't you?
They, no, they shut it down. They shut it down. We didn't even finish that document. They got, they got, watch it. They got PO'd. They gavled me. They told me they made their own rules. Of course, you can't really find a copy of them.
But that's perfectly legitimate procedure.
Then we're going to.
This board operates differently. We allow people to comment on agenda items when they're, when they're up. Other boards don't do that. And that's.
Well, maybe that's why when they bring it to town meeting, they don't get passed.
Well. Could be.
Could be.
Jason?
Yes.
Should we ask to have the stamp stickers question put on the agenda for our next meeting so we can discuss this further?
Reimbursements or?
Yeah, it's ours reimbursements and, and perhaps Keith getting in touch with Casella's and letting him know what, or even what we might want to do. But yes, have it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Any other public forum? Chip, you got anything? All right, approve the minutes, April twenty-second.
That motion we approve is submitted?
The only thing I see is approval of the payable warrants. Passed fifty-four to zero.
We had a big crowd that time.
Heck, we don't even get that many at town meeting.
All right, Bushman made the second. I'm able to approve the minutes. See if it's a second.
As amended.
As amended. We have no committee and board reports. Doesn't look like there's anything under Mr. Manager's report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, all right, let's go back to the food truck application, coast to coast. This is replacing the smoky one, I guess.
And then the motion that will approve the food truck application for, uh, again, you know, for closely colored skin or.
Motion by Velma. That's it. Second by Tom. Any more discussion on this? All those repeated? All right.
Top, now comes the fun part.
To view the warrant items.
Yeah, I provided to you in the, um, a, a review of the warrant with some explanations with it. In addition, I, um, I placed the exhibits uh, within your packet, uh, to show what was being presented by, uh, the planning, the planning board. Um, also the, uh, changes that, uh, you were contemplating for the food truck ordinance, the standalone ordinance. And, um, the elimination within the land use ordinance, uh, to create a floodplain ordinance, a standalone ordinance, um, to go along with the new FEMA maps that have come in. Um, we need to approve the ordinance as part of the new, um, uh, landscape, so to speak, uh, with regard to the, um, uh, FEMA insurance and mapping and whatnot. Not quite sure. I know you've reviewed all the dollar amounts, uh, within the budget and I don't know how much you want to get into the weeds in terms of the ordinance changes. Um, they were presented, uh, via the, uh, planning board in the packet. Uh, and then you've already reviewed and, um, okayed the, uh, dollar amounts, um, within the, uh, the warrant. Uh, the only thing I did do is that, um, I placed the resolution on, uh, on the carbon, cashback carbon pricing as Article thirty-five, which would be uh, after all of our money articles, but prior to, um, prior to getting into the boilerplate, um, articles that we generally try to do as a, as a collective group. Again, that would be a non-binding vote, um, that resolution on thirty-five, so, um.
What was the issue that Tom brought up on the seasonal, did I get?
Uh, I, I think Tom's, was that on the definition that's in the land use ordinance? Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay. Yes. Right, yeah, we, um, I believe the planning board did all those modifications, even, even, uh, though that nine point three point two-two is a standalone piece, I think they also put those other changes in the ordinance. The other thing in, in there is the, um, uh, the food truck ordinance, they removed it from the land use piece, uh, the performance standards and uh, place that within the, um, standalone ordinance that you presently have. Again, and the changes in your standalone ordinance were the intersection, definition on intersection. The language that Tom had presented for performance standards under item E. Uh, reference to the two-hundred-foot, uh, setback from intersections. And then we removed one piece under, um, uh, for licensing, um, in the last item, I believe. Yeah, the revocations of license removed item D.
Article seven doesn't have any exhibit.
No, um, we will have the attachment. It will be, the, the provision is, as you can see here. Yeah, there's, there's one on the table over there. It will be attached to the original document. It will be on the website as well, so people can see that. And we'll have all these handouts at the, at the meeting as well.
This is the state's plan, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's catered to a Rundle's use as well as the requirements of the new, uh, FEMA mapping that we received as well. And I think the issue was just to get it out of the ordinance, make it a standalone, so it's easier to modify as opposed to uh, when the time comes. Please, just come to the table, please, Chip.
Got a green light. Okay, thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Is the town planner going to be in attendance at the town meeting? To answer questions about good, this is a lot of changes.
I haven't heard if Lee J is attending or not. I don't.
He, he generally does not attend them. Uh, he will be done his duties uh, as planner for the town of, uh, Arundel by the end of May. Um, generally what happens is that the planning board chairman, he answers those questions once they are brought forward. As the planning board are the ones that are present, making these presentations to the board and to the citizens.
Okay. Um, this floodplain management ordinance is nineteen pages long. Um, I served on the planning board for three years. And skimming through this, I have no idea what it says. Um, I do want to ask specifically if uh, on the town website and at the meeting, if there could be a map that shows Zone AE and Zone A, which is those that appear to be the two areas of the town that are going to be affected by this ordinance. I, I think people need to be able to see. For example, if someone had a house in the Shoreland Early District on the Kennybrook River, they might want to know if that falls in Zone A or it's AE and is this going to impose restrictions?
Though, those maps, Chip, are already in our possession. They're in the planning office now. The code officer has all those maps. So you can avail yourself of them if you'd like to take a look at them. Determine what specifics.
What I'm guessing is if the public's going to vote on this, I think the public needs to have access to those maps. Both ahead of time and at the meeting.
Sure, I, I'm, I'm sure they were available at the public hearing that the planning board had on the, on, on the changes that they're presenting.
But they still should be made available at town meeting.
Yes. Um, yeah, I don't see why not. I'm sure we can have those maps here. There, there's quite a few panels. Um, it, it's just like, I mean, if you, if you ever looked at the mapping that the FEMA maps that they've presented us in the past, you know what they look like, so.
I, I do know what they look like, but that, it, it's just, th- this is, this is not this is not trivial. For landowners.
No, it's been in the several years in the making for the whole state of Maine, so, yeah, it's not trivial at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chip.
Is it? Chip, did you, did you look on the website, uh, like, because, uh, sometimes on the planning board, they have all submissions. Did you look to see if it was there?
To be perfectly honest, I did not because I didn't realize, I didn't see this until tonight.
I'll check tonight to see if they're, if they are, they are on the website. Because sometimes they, all the submissions they put on the website. But I'll, I'll look to see. But if not, we definitely should, should have them available here.
Okay, I certainly have access to the planning board if I need to.
I'll, I'll certainly give them a heads up that, uh, that this may come up when the vote's going to be on it, so they can be prepared to answer any and all questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Keith, would it be out of the norm to request like an informational meeting at one of the upcoming planning board meetings? Just where there is so much information. I mean, if, could they allot like, even if it was a half hour, forty-five minutes at the beginning of their meeting, if anybody had a question on any of this?
They, they've had public hearings on all of.
I, I understand they have, but.
I know they've posted their agenda for their next meeting, but, um, I, I, I'm not sure if they have the same provision where they add or subtract from the agenda prior to the meeting, so. Um, I can, I can follow up with them to see, uh, see that the inquiry has been made this evening and whether or not they would like to entertain some of those questions at their next meeting, I think is, I want to say May sixth.
Yeah, but May sixth is the next one.
Yeah.
And then there was another one that was this staff review, but means.
Right, May sixth is their next business meeting.
When Anne sent out today. I don't have it on the email, but.
If you approve the, and sign the warrant this evening, I have two copies here that I'd like to get original signatures on. Don't see anything on the planning board submissions.
No.
On the FEMA map.
So they've been, well, we might have to go backwards. You, Keith, you know when they reviewed this? Probably don't, right? When they reviewed the FEMA map?
No, do not know. See floodplain definitions and then I see floodplain definitions again.
Yeah, I should definitely have the maps there for people to look at.
Those are not on the website. We'll see if we can get them attached to the website as well as part of the package, so people can look at them there. Well, I, I will make a motion that we accept the warrant as presented.
Motion by Dan to accept the warrant as presented, seconded by Tom. Any more discussion on these at all? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Yeah, I just have two original.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be in a Zoom meeting right now too for I guess. I wasn't expecting this to go. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, please. Um, so the only thing else we got is the payroll. Motion by Velma to accept the payroll. Second, to approve the payrolls. Uh, second by Dan. All those in favor? Anything else?
There'll be nothing else added to the warrant. It's warrant signed this evening. That will be the warrant that will go to the annual town meeting. Now, if something changed and they wanted to add something, then the board could, could address that, and they would have another posted meeting and discuss that issue if they so desire, but it's my intent to with, this is it. This will be the warrant that will go forward, simply because we're trying to, one of the deadlines we had is we wanted to make sure that it meets, it gets into the town report as accurate as possible. If we wait too long, I think she's going to print on May first with a lot of the documents, so I wanted to make sure that we got it in.
Seeing nothing else, I'll look for a motion of adjournment. Oh, sorry, Chip. Yep, sorry.
I apologize, I should have asked this, I guess, during the public comment period, but you mentioned a May first printing deadline. I trust the ballots are going to be proofread by multiple people this time?
Don't worry, your name will be first.
Excellent.
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty-three.
Thank you, Dan. Second by Phil. All those in favor?